The regular meeting of Lakewood City Council for March 6, 2023 is hereby called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. We will now pause for a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Baker?
Here.
Bullock?
Here.
Keppel?
Here.
Litton?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Rader? Schachner?
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held February 21st, 2023.
Move to dispose without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'll abstain, and that motion passes. And with, if it's okay with everyone, I'm gonna move items 18 and 19 from our docket to the top of the agenda. Madam Clerk.
Item 18, communication from Fire Chief Dunphy regarding severe weather awareness week.
Assistant Chief Mick Tennessevich, Tennessevich, is here in place of Chief Dunphy, and I know he's on duty tonight, so we wanted to move him to the top of our docket at your convenience.
Thank you. This is from Chief Dunphy. Dear members of council, attached, please find a resolution for your consideration proclaiming March 19th to March 25th, 2023 as severe weather awareness week. The Lakewood Fire Department has asked Lakewood City Schools to conduct a tornado drill on Wednesday, March 22nd, at 9:50 a.m. The city of Lakewood will sound the outdoor early warning siren, and Lakewood Fire Department personnel will observe the drill in as many of our schools as possible. This will be Lakewood's opportunity to ensure the preparedness of our school system, and to test our emergency alert system and other components of emergency management. In addition, raising community awareness and allowing for planning of threats such as tornadoes can result in the saving of lives and the prevention of injury. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Chief Tim Dunphy.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Assistant Chief, do you have any additional comments to add or anything like that?
Oh, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 19, Resolution 2023-13, a resolution proclaiming March 19th through March 25th, 2023, severe weather awareness week.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Other than to acknowledge, as we head into the spring, hopefully here soon, how important it is that we are aware of severe weather events and how they impact our city and how they could, how we could do things to be safer as a community. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 1, report from Committee of the Whole held just now, March 6, 2023.
Thank you. Committee of the Whole did meet this evening at 6:00 p.m. to discuss primarily, in addition to approving our minutes, the ARPA funds that council has to allocate roughly $2 million within this year, and another million next year to allocate. We did come to some conclusions on several specific items, specifically $175,000 proposed by Councilman Schachner for Hawk Crosswalk. We also discussed $20,000 and $25,000 respectively proposed by Councilman Bullock related to equipment and storage at Madison Park, as well as holiday lighting for our city as well. $25,000 towards the, our animal shelter, and supported by Councilmen Rader and Councilwoman Marx. $10,000 for spay and neuter clinics, supported by, I believe, Councilman Bullock, Marx, and Rader, council members Bullock, Marx, and Rader. And also small business support through Lakewood Alive, to the tune of $50,000, supported by Councilmen Schachner, Baker, Litton, and Bullock. And that is the totality of the allocations that were discussed. We did discuss some of the larger ticket items, also being discussed through a maybe more lengthy council retreat that we would have through a Committee of the Whole meeting in the coming month or so, as well as just some other logistics on how we intend to spend the funds and that sort of a thing. But I found it to be a pretty collegial atmosphere where we work towards some common goals. I think everybody was amenable to working with the administration on how to implement some of these specific items, and I hope to have things wrapped up as efficiently as we, as we can, while also providing time for some good discussion. Move to receive and file that oral report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 2, report from Public Works and Sustainability Committee regarding meetings held February 27th, 2023, and March 6, 2023.
Councilman Rader.
Thank you, Mr. President. As indicated, the committee met both on February 27th and tonight, March 6th, for a short meeting. This is the Public Works and Sustainability Committee, and all members were present. The major topic of consideration was a resolution that would increase our pool fees. That is attached and will follow this communication. It was a robust discussion. There are several iterations of the pool fees presented by the Recreation Department and the Lakewood City Schools. Due to the renovations to the pool and rising costs of both chemicals and for labor, it is pretty essential that we raise rates in order to meet those rising demands. The School District did a phenomenal job, as did the administration, of actually going through all the adjoining districts that have, that have pools, such as Rocky River, Westlake Bay Village, Avon Lake, Avon, all the West Side communities. And they established what was actually, I think, a very sound methodology for, for what these pool fees should be. And again, the following resolution will indicate what those, what those pool fees are. And, and Madam Clerk, will we be able to update that with the newest, I don't have a copy of it in front of me, but once we get to it, we'll make sure that those are all in alignment. And if they are, then I would highly recommend, and then we as a committee did recommend adoption, and those are all in alignment with what we, what we had decided. So you can see those on the screen. They do, again, indicate, they are a substantial increase, especially for the, for the season passes, but we will have undoubtedly the, one of the best, I think, pool systems on the West Side, if not the county, if not the state. And again, these, these fees are actually on the low end of the West Side of Cuyahoga County. So we're proud to offer these services, and we're sort of making up for, for some lost ground. Last time we considered this was 2019. We decided back then not to raise pool fees because there hadn't been any real construction done on our pools to upgrade and to make those essential improvements. Now that we have, we feel these are in alignment, and this is how we feel they should be represented. Again, thank you to the School District particularly for taking the time, meeting me with us this week, to help kind of take feedback from the committee. One of the things we did change was the non-residential rates. We felt those could sort of be more representative of the increase that we were being told was happening on the residential side, so that those increases were essentially in parity. And again, these are the rates that we recommended. So with that, I'll move to receive this communication and recommend adoption for the following resolution. Thank you, Council President.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to receive and file that oral reports, or set of oral reports, I suppose? I do appreciate the discourse that took place related to the pool fees, that while it might be viewed as a small thing, it's a lot, especially in a year where we're gonna have new pool. And biggest bite of the apple is now, so I appreciate it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 3, Resolution 2023-07, a resolution to take effect immediately establishing rates of admission to the Lakewood Municipal Swimming Pools located at Lakewood Park and Madison Park and superseding ordinance 1019 and all other ordinances inconsistent herein within.
Move to substitute.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Item 4, report from Health and Human Services Committee meeting held February 27th, 2023.
Chairperson Mark? Keppel, sorry.
At the February 27th meeting of the Health and Human Services Committee, committee members Keppel, Marx, and Rader were joined by Councilmember Baker, Assistant Director of Planning David Boss, Planning Director Lininger, and Clerk Bach, also an attendance for Kate Ingersoll of Healthy Lakewood Foundation, and Lakewood City Schools representatives Mark Walter and Lisa Bruning. After approving the minutes of the January 23rd meeting, discussion of Resolution 2023-09 ensued. Assistant Director Boss introduced the resolution and spoke of the need to formalize a permanent standing committee to not only continue the work of the Community Health Needs Assessment, but also that of previous initiatives on community health in which the city was involved, dating back to the mid 2000s. This resolution forms an initial committee of seven core members, including representatives from City Council, the Planning Department, Human Services Department, Lakewood City Schools, Healthy Lakewood Foundation, and the Three Arches Foundation, and builds in the capacity to expand up to 21 members and to form subcommittees to work on specific subjects. The committee voted unanimously to recommend adoption of Resolution 2023-09 to council. Move to receive and file that oral report.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 5, Resolution 2023-09, a resolution to take effect immediately establishing the Community Health Needs Standing Committee to support the development and implementation of actions related to identified health needs, as well as the consideration of future opportunities for community partnerships, programming, and other initiatives to build and sustain a culture of health action in Lakewood.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 6, Substitute Ordinance 3, 2023, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the Director of Finance to enter into equipment leases and forms approved by the Director of Law on behalf of the City of Lakewood.
Law Director Vargo, I, even though it's presented as a substitute, I believe I still, we still have to move to substitute in this instance? Just to be clear? And maybe it's changed even since the substitute was a substitute?
No, we, no, it, what you received this afternoon is the final substitution, the three-word substitution, so you can move to-
What's docketed is, as we should approve?
Yes.
And not-
Agreed.
Cool. That's what I was at.
Yeah. I think we ought to, Finance recommended it, the substitute version, but council hasn't.
Okay. Since, since council hasn't addressed it as a substitute, I think we're just gonna, in this, for the sake of clarity, move to substitute. So I will move to substitute in this, for this ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
And that motion passes.
Item 7, Resolution 2023-08, a resolution to take effect immediately permitting the Mayor, Director of Public Works, Finance Director, and Purchasing Manager to purchase certain vehicles and equipment without advertising and competitive bidding or specific approval of council as required by LCO 111-04.
Once again, I believe we have a substitute version, so I will, will move to substitute.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Item 8, Ordinance 48-2022A, an ordinance to take effect immediately to provide for creating positions and rates of pay for full-time and certain part-time annual salaried employees and hourly rate employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, and the several departments, divisions, and offices of the city, including Chief of Fire, Chief of Police, and Civil Service Commissioners, and superseding ordinance 48-2022.
I'll first move to substitute.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
Yes.
And that motion passes. And this being on third reading, I'm of a mind to move to adopt unless there's any objection, so I'll move to adopt. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President-
Mr. President, Keppel.
Did we want to hear from Director Dillinger about the changes in the substitute?
That would be great.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Yes, we submitted a substitute salary ordinance, so the original request was just to change the title of the Civil Service Secretary title, but after reviewing the salary ordinance more in depth, we realized when we updated our license stipends and our AFSMI contracts, which a lot are reflected in a salary ordinance as well for non-union staff, that those needed to be updated. For example, we had an employee recently promoted from a union position to a non-union position, and their salary stipend went backwards, and, you know, we would like to see parity among all staff for the same licensing. So we have updated the salary ordinance to also reflect the, the increased license stipends that were implemented in the union contracts effective first of this year, along with a few additional ones that were added into the contracts as well.
Okay. Any questions from my colleagues? Or for the discussion otherwise? Hearing none on the motion to adopt. Madam Clerk.
Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marx?
Yes.
Rader?
Yes.
Schachner?
And that motion passes.
Item 9, Ordinance 4, 2023, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the transfer in advance of certain funds.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 10, communication from councilmembers Rader and Bullock regarding county public utility agreement.
I will look to my left and, let, Councilman Rader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dear colleagues, striving for a more significant, striving for more significant progress on climate, economic development, and equity goals in the current utility model supports, Cuyahoga County has created its own electrical distribution utility focused on resilient local renewable energy. As a part of the plan, Cuyahoga County is seeking to include communities like Lakewood in the opportunity such a utility would create. The county would like the city of Lakewood, the county would like the city of Lakewood's permission to operate this public utility within our borders. Lakewood would join Brooklyn, Brook Park, Cleveland Heights, Euclid, each as they have passed very similar permissive resolutions. This utility would allow for unique projects such as microgrids, maybe snowflakes on poles, I don't know, more, more, and more renewable energy options for residents and businesses. These partnerships and projects would help to reduce energy costs, bring more affordable renewable power to Lakewood, and would modernize parts of our aging electrical infrastructure, leading to increased reliability. The following resolution is just the first step to allow the county utility, public utility, to consider Lakewood as a place to make these valuable investments. It is important to note that this resolution does not conflict or supplant any, supplant, yeah, any other agreement with existing utility providers. Further, the county is not required to, to operate or make those investments. This is simply opening the door for collaboration and for more energy options, investment, and creative projects. We hope that the passage of this resolution marks the beginning of a bright new future for our power system here in Lakewood. Yours truly, myself, and Councilmember Bullock, I'll move to receive and file that communication. I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President, thank you. I'd happy, I was happy to support, Councilman Rader really took the lead on this, and I know he's working in good faith with the administration and the county government. This is innovative and a good new option to add. It's possible that we could join on paper and never have a project, or not have a project for some years, but it's just a new legal slash administrative means by which different energy projects could take place. And as we see the explosion of new technology in, in the energy space, there, there's a lot of creative uses that could happen. Often, those will run right smack into the business preferences of our monopoly-regulated utility, and, and so that can slow things down. So having this as a new option really can give us some flexibility, and, and I'm really keen to, to have Lakewood show leadership once again as one of the earliest municipalities in, in the county to participate in this regional effort. By the way, the solar panels above our heads and on three other municipal buildings in, municipally-owned buildings in the, in the city were done in a similar fashion where we piggybacked on a county contract, a county-wide contract, and a master contract that made some of the legal and financial contractual structures turnkey. We were the first, or among the first, to participate in that county-wide approach. So we're doing the regionalism thing that many in the, in the newspaper business at Cleveland.com always ask for. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none on the motion to receive and file. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 11, Resolution 2023-10, a resolution authorizing the Mayor or Director of Public Works to enter into an agreement with Cuyahoga County for the operation of a public utility within the boundaries of the city of Lakewood.
Move to refer to Public Works and Sustainability Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just real quick, we're gonna-
Councilman Rader.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll invite Council, or Director Foley, as well as other staff from the county, to that, that committee hearing, and if members have questions, they'll be more than happy to answer those questions then, and I'm sure some, some may have questions. It's a pretty new, unique thing, as Mr. Bullock alluded to, maybe one of the first county utilities in the country, so if folks have questions, bring those to that committee, and we'll get that scheduled shortly.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 12, communication from Mayor George regarding 2023 NOPEC Grant Awards.
Mayor George.
Thank you, members of council. As a member of NOPEC, I am pleased to report that the city of Lakewood has been awarded over $165,000 through two separate NOPEC programs. The NOPEC Energized Community Grant Funds and the Community Event Sponsorship Program. The purpose of the NEC grant is to assist each member community in achieving greater energy efficiency and/or expand energy infrastructure to benefit everyone while achieving greater savings. As you are aware, the city will be undertaking important action items as set forth in our climate action plan. As such, the NEC grant will be escrowed with NOPEC until identification of these important initiatives. We will then evaluate the action items of each initiative for potential funding through the NEC grant. The community event program dollars will be directed or passed through to Lakewood Alive to continue their seasonal front porch concert series. It is important to note that the purpose of the Community Event Sponsorship Program is for NOPEC to provide financial support to deserving organizations within our city that host events for residents. This front porch concert series embodies this NOPEC community event sponsorship mission. I am pleased to make you aware of this award, for which no matching funds are required. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 13, Resolution 2023-11, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the city of Lakewood to enter into an agreement to accept NOPEC Energized Community Grant.
I'm of the opinion, since we're simply receiving funds here, that we ought to adopt tonight, and I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 14, communication from Law Director Vargo regarding Lakewood Park concession lease with Help Foundation, Inc.
Director Vargo.
Thank you, Council President, members of council. This is an ordinance that would extend the concession lease between the city and Help Foundation for the provision of food concessions at Lakewood Park in 2023. Help Foundation and its predecessor has, have been the service provider for the food concession at Lakewood Park since 2017, without a vent, and doing so well, consistent with the, the strong mission of the Help Foundation. This ordinance would simply allow the city to extend the concession lease for another year on terms substantially the same as the prior years. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, Director, are there any time constraints related to this? I mean, I know we couldn't take forever to decide, but, is there any-
There is not. The concession, the current concession, I believe, expires in April of 2023, so we have time.
Okay. Noting that, that this is not substantively changed since the last time, and it's the same vendor we've used for years, I'd be of a mind to adopt tonight, once we get to the resolution, but just wanted to understand the timeline.
Thank you.
But for now, I'll move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I agree.
Okay. Hearing none. I'm sorry, Councilman Bullock.
I'm happy to support the motion. I do recall we had a conversation in previous years about hours of service and whether the vendor was in a position to extend the hours of service and how we could make sure to do that. And I don't have updated information on, you know, how, how things went in the, in the previous season, so I'd be interested in getting that update.
Okay.
Thanks.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, Councilman Baker.
Yeah, and I know we're just on the, the communication now, but I, I would also appreciate a discussion on this point, particularly with likely what we can all maybe see as increased traffic to the area. Would just be interested to hear the vendor.
Good points. Okay. Any further discussion on the communication? Hearing none on the motion to receive and file. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 15, Resolution 2023-12, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing and directing the Mayor to enter into an amendment to the concession lease agreement with Help Foundation, Inc. for the operation of food concessions at Lakewood Park pursuant to Section 15508 of the codified ordinances.
Appreciating the comments of my colleagues and acknowledging we have a new pool in the offing that might shift some things at least a little bit, I'll move to refer to our Public Works and Sustainability Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the top? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 16, communication from Finance Director Rankatour regarding summer sprinkling program.
Director Rankatour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 16, Communication from Finance Director Rankatour Regarding Summer Sprinkling Program.
Director Rankatour.
President Litten and Members of the Council, the City of Lakewood Division of Public Utilities offers a special discount via the Summer Sprinkling Program, which discounts the sewer portion of the utility bill for qualifying homeowners for the months of July, August, and September of each year. The general calculation compares the difference in water usage in the summer months versus the average usage during the previous months of January through April. Usage above the January through April average during the months of July through September is considered the result of summer sprinkling activities. Homeowner savings is derived from and attributable to a reduced sewer system portion of the utility bill based on the average water consumption in the first four months of the year. The savings program accounts for summer activities such as sprinkling, landscaping, and filling a water garden or pool, which are in full swing in June. Considering our appreciation of our homeowners, the fairness and merits of the program, and the fact that the consent decree is behind us, the administration is proposing to add the month of June to the Summer Sprinkling Program in support of the desire of our homeowners to participate in traditional summer activities and beautification of their property. Please place this on first reading and refer to the Finance Committee for further discussion.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 17, Ordinance 5, 2023, an ordinance to take effect immediately amending Section 90213 Summer Sprinkling Program of the Codified Ordinances to expand the program by one month.
Move to refer to Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bullock.
Just want to acknowledge the proposal and thank the Finance Director for the forthcoming discussion. I think it would be wonderful if we, after deliberation, conclude that we can, you know, afford to do so, and I, you know, know that the residents who have been facing and paying increased rates because of the much discussed need for us to invest in our stormwater and sewage collection system upgrades, they've been feeling the pain, so taking a step to make it more affordable is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to the discussion. Any further discussion here tonight? Hearing none. All those in favor of the referral say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 18, Communication from Fire Chief Dumphy Regarding Severe Weather Awareness...
Oh, we already got that.
Already did that.
Check.
Item 20, Liquor Permit Talia &amp; Brothers LLC.
I think we're pending some additional info, but Director Vargo or Chief?
Yes. Yes. Based on the information from Chief Calcheck, we're going to seek an extension of time for that review.
Okay. So on item 20, I'll move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 21, Liquor Permit Keppel Retail LLC.
Same story, if I'm not mistaken. All right. I'll move to defer.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none.